I'd like to open up the regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission, July 9th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cartipillis.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Snuppes.
Here.
Mr. Mills, Mr. Smith, Mr. Magrino, and Mrs. Corboll will not be at tonight's meeting.
We have the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any changes or comments about those minutes? If not, may I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
If a motion made and second approved minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the minutes are now approved. Are there any reports or correspondence that we don't have in our packet?
No.
Are there site plans or subdivisions filed for review?
There is one site plan. It's the Antho Commercial Center on Route 19 between Lakeside Plaza and McMurray Shops. It's got a little white house that sits there.
Oh, yeah.
They're talking about tearing that down and building another commercial center there with connections to both the property to the north and to the south.
Are there any -- is the agenda changed or is it approved as in our packet?
Pre-gas submitted. No changes.
Before we begin the old business part, are there any audience comments not relegated to any of the agenda items? Having here none, we'll go on to -- we'll go through old business, which there aren't any, and we'll go right into new business with the Planning Commission recommendation of the waterfall plan Phase 1A, final plan on Cathy Anne Lane and Nancy Drive.
Carl and Ann Snyder, Mr. Snyder's here tonight. They own 5.6 acres of land and that's split between four lots, three of which are on Nancy Drive and one is a residual parcel on that frontage on to Cathy Anne Court. This is a re-subdivision of lots 102, 103, and 104 of the waterfall plan, which was recorded back in January of 1990. If we could switch to the plan, the plan combines lots 103 and 104 in the waterfall plan Phase 1 into new Lot 3. Lot 3 becomes a 2.57 acre plus-size lot, and that's the lot where the Snyder's residence It sits on that lot and is in compliance with all our setback requirements. Lot 102, which is a one-plus-acre lot, is being proposed to be split into lots -- lots 1 and 2, and they're both half-acre plus-size lots with the proper frontage and width of the building line, so he's taking that lot and making it two. At the end of Cathy Anne Court, and it's hard to see on this plan if we could go back to the aerial, you see this Lot 4 is a fairly large parcel. The Snyder's had a sport court on there. It's my understanding that they have a buyer for this lot to build a new home. Access to the lot comes off the end of Cathy Anne Court. It's my understanding, the intent of the new buyers to take that sport court out when they build the new house. Peters Township Sanitary Authority is involved in this subdivision. There is going to be a sewer extension for sure. It appears across Nancy Drive to serve lots 1 and 2. And the engineers that are working for Mr. Snyder, that would be J.R. Gels and Associates, are trying to figure out whether or not it's best to serve Lot 4, the lot on Cathy Anne Court, via a lateral extension off of Cathy Anne Court, or whether or not to bring a sewer line up the lot line here with a manhole and serve Lot 4 via gravity flow to a manhole here. That's still kind of up in the air right now. It doesn't affect the lot configuration. It will require a possible easement be added before we go to council. So before we go to council, we'll get that figured out. No new lots are being -- go ahead.
I was gonna say, it doesn't notice sewer line easement at 1 and 2 right now.
Right. They're still trying to figure that out. The plan does not create any new lots. It's reconfiguring existing lots, so there's no net increase in total lots. Therefore, no sewage facility planning module, DEP approval is required. This area of Peters is zoned low-density residential, half-acre minimum, 100 feet of lot width at the building line. All four lots meet that requirement.
You're saying there's four lots on there now?
Yeah. One, I'm counting, this is a lot. There's Lot 103, I think it is, 102, and then there's a lot over here.
Oh, okay.
See?
Okay, sorry.
So, you know, this is a recommendation to council. The next step is to go to council for final plan approval and planning staff's recommending, the commission recommends council approve the waterfall plan Phase 1A, subject to those five conditions in my memo to you dated July 2, 2020.
What's the access to Lot 4? Will it be with Cathy Anne Lane?
Yes. Off the cul-de-sac. Go to that area.
And that'll be permitted? It'll not have any issues, encumbrances, or anything?
No. The right-of-way of Cathy Anne Court goes to the property. You know, it's just gonna be a driveway connection to the end of the cul-de-sac. Do we have the sewer lines on here itself? Yes, we do, right? This is the sanitary sewer that ends right here. There's a manhole. Peters Township Sanitary's given Lot 4 here options. They could extend the lateral. I'm sorry, I don't know if it's a lateral. They might require a sewer line extension with a manhole here or go up between lots 1 and 2 off of Nancy Drive. That's what J.R. Gels is trying to figure out right now.
What's the terrain look like right there? It looks like hilly.
Uh...
It slopes towards the cul-de-sac.
Carl, you can come to the podium and answer that question?
The...
And identify yourself.
Identify yourself. Oh, sorry.
Right up here.
Can I walk up and point?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I've just gotta get to the mic so they can hear you.
Okay, well, I'll have to speak up as I go. I mean, obviously, when I installed the tennis court, this is fairly level, this whole area.
Oh, it is.
It's fairly level. It slopes down here, but this is a pretty level lot.
For the planning department, there don't have to be any sidewalks for these lots when they ever get developed, or they're okay with that?
This is an area of Peters that developed without sidewalks, so we're not requiring that they put any sidewalks.
That's good. Yeah, that makes sense. I don't have any questions for the applicant or the department unless you guys do.
Nope.
I make a recommend -- a motion to recommend approval of this subdivision, re-subdivision, according to the memo and with the conditions noted in the memo dated July 2, 2020, and also adding a note to that the sewer line would be identified on the plans.
Okay, we have an active motion?
Aye, second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right motion passes.
Thank you.
B, under new business, we have the Planning Commission approval. This is the revised site plan for Lighthouse Electric on 420 Venetia Road.
Lighthouse Partners, who owns Lighthouse Electric, is seeking the Planning Commission's approval to revise their site plan and add a new warehouse, a 9,840 square-foot warehouse to the back portion of their site. It's located at 420 Venetia Road. This area of Peters is zoned, mixed-use corridor, West Venetia Road, mixed-use corridor. This type of use is a permitted use in that zone. Currently, the existing business occupies 28,866 square feet of space, 2,750 square feet of that space is office, the rest of it is warehouse. The proposed expansion would create a freestanding warehouse back portion of the site. Peters Township Fire Department has been heavily involved in the location of this new freestanding warehouse. It has access to -- fire has access to all four sides of it. It's 40 feet off of the existing building, existing Lighthouse Electric building. The warehouse will be equipped with all the emergency lighting and monitor pipe, smoke and fire detection system. It will not be sprinkled. It's less than 10,000 square feet, and Fire Department has access to all four sides. The warehouse exterior is matching what the existing building looks like. The big 28,000-plus-square-foot building is a combination of almond and bronze, combination of brick, block, steel. So this building is being designed to complement and match and blend into what is existing The rendering doesn't show the doors, right? There'll be just one door facing Venetia Road, one door facing in toward the existing building, and one bronze door facing southward Nottingham Township and the railroad tracks behind. This addition of 9,840 square feet of warehouse does not trigger any additional parking requirements or any additional site improvements.
No stormwater management changes?
Stormwater management will be handled via -- at the building permit with a pipe. We won't let them just discharge directly out. There was one thing, they will be subject to a traffic impact fee, though. It's a warehouse, so it doesn't generate a lot of PMP hour trips, so staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the plan for Lighthouse to add the warehouse space to the back of the site, subject to those three conditions listed in my memo to you dated July 2, 2020.
Okay.
The owners are here. If we have any questions?
No additional signings?
No.
Is this the elevation that will face Venetia Road?
Yeah, minus one door.
I'm just curious, how is the traffic impact fee calculated for the commercial add-on like that?
Well, the traffic engineers put out a ITE trip manual, and they look at that manual. They determine that -- they've studied warehouses, and they know how many PMP hour trips a warehouse generates. In this case, it generates one PMP hour trip, so therefore their traffic impact fee's gonna be $1,500.
Are there any audience comments regarding this particular item? Do any of the members have any questions for the applicant?
I'll make a -- hearing none, no further comments, I'll make a motion that the Lighthouse Electric revised site plan be approved in accordance with Planning Commission's memo dated July 2, 2020, subject to the conditions outlined in that memo. There are three.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. The third item under our new business is a recommendation from the Planning Commission for the Lutz Farm preliminary plan on Thomas Road.
Ted Taylor, owner of a 26-acre parcel on both sides of Thomas Road, is requesting Planning Commission recommendation and ultimately Township approval for the creation of a 40-lot subdivision of Lutz Farms, again, on both sides of Thomas Road with two separate access points on Thomas Road. One side will feature two cul-de-sacs that house the majority of the development, and then the other side of the development will house a smaller portion of the total units with another cul-de-sac at the end with temporary access to an adjacent property. Stormwater management for this development would be handled by a single detention facility located on the northern side of Thomas Road, and it will capture the stormwater runoff from each of the three cul-de-sacs throughout the development. Sanitary sewer service for this potential development is a little bit interesting. There is not currently mainline access this far west on or south on Thomas Road, so they will be proposing, with the Sanitary Authority, an extension along Thomas Road to ultimately service the entirety of this development, so the developer's having to work with a number of private landowners to secure easements to allow for the extension of the sanitary sewer line. Open space for the development will exceed the minimum requirement for the conservation residential overlay district requirements. They require 25% of their gross acreage at exactly six acres. They are proposing 6.3 acres of overall open space. At this time, it is unclear as to if the developer is intending to establish a homeowners' association to maintain this open space. We will need the developer to make that final determination before we go to council ultimately, so it's clear moving forward who this open space is intended to be maintained by either homeowners' association or potentially the township. The township would take over the stormwater facility, but typically, you know, homeowners' associations would take over and maintain any open space. A geotechnical report has been submitted to the township, a subsequent revised report after some comments by Gateway Engineers, so the geotechnical report is currently in the review stage. As is typical with most of all of the new residential developments, a traffic impact fee of $1,500 will apply per lot. That will be paid at the time of building permit. The new homes in this development propose in the $500,000 and up range. Here on the screen are two pictures of homes that were recently constructed by Ted Taylor in the Juniper Woods subdivision. Relatively similar lot sizes and potentially some similar housing styles will be seen in this Lutz Farms subdivision plan. We've not actually seen those renderings yet, so we'll need to see those before we go to council for preliminary plan approval, but this could give you an idea of what they're intending to build there. Staff is making a recommendation of approval, subject to the 16 conditions listed out in my July 2, 2020 memo to the Planning Commission. I'm here to answer any further questions. We also have the applicant's engineer here as well.
Seth, the turning radius on number 12, probably 25 feet, is it shown as something less right now?
It's not shown as something less right now. We just simply want it labeled on all the plans. It's just because we've had these, we've created these narrow roads recently, it's something we just want to be very clear on the plans that it is a 25-foot turning radius that we meet all of our turning radius requirements for emergency vehicles and such.
Is there a typical number of hydrants that need to be done on developments?
I mean, that's determined by the Fire Department, and they've looked at this and provided hydrant locations for the, to the engineer.
And on the stormwater management, is it a contained system or is it a detention control?
Caleb, can you speak more to that?
Yeah, I can. Go ahead and introduce yourself. Sure. My name is Caleb Tavon. I'm the engineer for this project. The stormwater system will be contained within that facility. It's proposed to do necessary water quality in addition to the rate control at that location.
When you say contained, is it a tank system or is it an open?
It's an above-ground system.
Okay. And is there any discussion with the planning department about needing a place for -- school buses certainly can't get through this. I mean, it may not be a development for families, but it certainly has to be thought about. Is there a place, this is a open question for anybody, to where a school bus would pull over and safely let the kids off or get them back on?
We have sidewalk access down to Thomas Road on both sides of the development, so we could certainly accommodate for a bus stop on both sides.
Okay. There's so much going on in this picture, isn't there?
Yeah, there's a lot going on there.
You mean stopping on Thomas?
No, I think stopping on Thomas, yeah.
They won't go in?
They won't go in yet. Eventually, if you could pan out just a tad, the cul-de-sac on the lower side, eventually Gerhold Farm and Simmons Farm, whatever develop, that road would go up there and extend out to just about. School buses may go in that at some point. They won't go in the other side, period, because they don't go into a plant that they can't continue to move forward.
Sure. And the sidewalks on both sides of the road?
Correct.
Excellent.
What about mailbox? The clusters of the ones, is there three or one or two or how many?
There's two. There's one for each side.
Where is the ones on the?
The one on the east side is located at the entrance.
Yeah.
The one on the west side is located to the right of there. Yep, right there. So we have pull-offs and adequate-sized parking spaces, one ADA space and one regular space, then a sidewalk to accommodate cluster box units at each location.
So if I live to the left, I would, there's parking spaces to the left and then I'd lock back to the mailbox?
There are spaces to the left, yes.
One thing that we have incorporated in this development that's a little bit new for us, we tried to key in some off-street, some designated off-street parking. Again, when we've created these narrow roads, we have somewhat of a concern that if you have a lot of people parking on the street, you're creating some obstructions for traffic and circulation. So at the end of this cul-de-sac here, we've created some off-street parking opportunities as well as around, you know, the eastern cluster mailbox, that's pretty standard, but on the other one, we've created some additional opportunities for off-street parking, so guests can park there and not have to take up the street or something.
How long is the street?
It's a 20-foot cartway, 18-foot, nine-foot lanes, and then a foot wedge curve on each side.
Even though this hasn't been stated on here, the Fire Company, which now gets a chance to look at all of this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It just, again, there's so much going on here, it looks as if there's more. Any, only one person in the audience, any comments on this regard?
Where's the next road, where are the next intersections on Thomas? There's those site problems right within that.
The next intersection is 600 feet south on Thomas. It's Johnson Road.
Peter.
Correct.
I guess the only other access, just to the, looking at the diagram there to the right, is where the church is.
Correct.
And their driveway comes into...
It comes into, we did investigate having an entrance up there, but we couldn't get the necessary site distance for our site.
Thomas Road is a state road, so they need highway occupancy permits.
Yeah, I know the access from Johnson Road onto Thomas is a little hairy at times.
Making that left.
Exactly, and I come down there all the time.
It is. Not fun.
Yeah, I mean, these locations for these roads are pretty much the only locations where they work on the site, so.
Right. And then the stable, the horse stable, riding rink is to the left of this property.
Correct.
Do we have an area like this? I don't think I zoomed that far. Barely. You can see that.
Yeah, there it is.
So we provided a 25-foot landscape buffer along that property.
Farm.
Yeah, as it was considered for farm use.
So I guess in the future, does Ted have any preliminary plans to extend or he's just waiting in the event that Simmons or...
It's our job, it's Planning Commission's job to make sure that...
Connections there.
Right. Making that a temporary cul-de-sac, so that, there's lots of acres up there. There's the Simmons Farm and the Gerhold Farm. At some point, that's gonna develop and...
And there'll be a sign at the end of that cul-de-sac that says, you know, temporary cul-de-sacks, and people that buy there at the end know that that very well could continue on through at some point.
Well, I know when I built, when Ted built my house in Stonehenge, my house was a cul-de-sac on Lentele.
Temporary closure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked at options on the neighboring property, but nothing else further.
Right. Now, since there are so many, I guess, in-progress items here, what are we approving? Obviously, is this the final last?
We're in preliminary stage. So this will come back to you for final.
Exactly.
All you're doing now is making a recommendation to council for their approval of the preliminary plan, and we hope to have a number of these conditions addressed even by the time we go to council.
And then it'll loop back around.
And we'll come back again.
Okay.
Yes.
Should be, it's before the sheet.
Aren't they, has any of that there?
And then Mr. Lutz built, I think it's his daughter's house to the left of this property.
Well, there's a new, there's a new house under construction right...
Oh, across the street?
For his daughter.
He's got a new house under construction right there.
Correct. That was the old, see that little gray thing? Can you point to it?
Right below the 277.
That's the, that's Mr. Lutz's old house.
Right. It's gone.
Gone, gone. That new house is...
Correct.
Yeah, so you built that.
Rather hard.
Mm-hmm.
Ted, do you have any questions regarding?
Well, just looking at, that's pretty steep right here. There's no houses right there. Let's see. You know, what's the, the question is, is if that water running down right into where it's going there, what's the risk? I can't tell which way.
Well, that right there is a low point of parade.
This is the low point, and it's continuing to go lower here.
Correct.
So waters can run right out onto Thomas in heavy rain. I mean, what worse, what's the water collection in this area?
Right now, we just have storm sewers along the, within the road. I mean, we could investigate putting a diversion channel on top of the slope.
Where are you pointing to, Ted?
He's pointing, I mean, he's looking right.
Yeah, right at the, right straight in, coming straight in. And that, see how that slopes straight out and straight down the road and straight to Thomas? So heavy, heavy angle though, all the way to Thomas. See if there's that.
That's quite a distance, though, because those houses are on Druid within Stonehenge. They do slope down, but...
Yeah, the water should cut off.
The ports.
Right.
This is in the other direction away from Druid.
What's the vegetation like? Is it trees and grass and...
Those are just backyards of homes right there.
But I mean, on this, on this property, so there's, it's not concrete or...
No.
There's gonna be some absorption.
Yeah, I'm saying if it's hard, it's gonna go to...
And he is showing five, five storm inlets, three at that intersection?
Yeah.
And then two along the way, so there are numerous storm inlets planned for.
So...
Those inlets will capture the runoff before it gets to Thomas Road and get the water going.
Yeah, that's the whole point, yeah, just trying to make sure that that's been addressed. Because that will be, you know, when it hits, it will be a lot of... Because that will be, you know, when it hits, it will be... My concern is not the neighborhood so much as it's going to be washing out to Thomas if it goes. When it goes, it'll be...
I'll just add some more. We had that similar situation when up on Just About.
Just About Farms?
Right.
That's because the conservation district makes the developers put those...
Storm silsacks.
Silksacks into the sand source. They get clogged and no water gets into the storm source.
Yeah.
So those are problematic and...
Yeah, when it rains hard, the absorption of those things change way slow. Yeah, there's not much you can do. I mean, they have high-flow ones, but they're still not adequate size.
Yeah, to try to keep silks going into the sewers, that stuff's so fine, there's only one way to do it.
We'll keep an eye on that during construction.
Yep.
Let's see what we've got there.
Okay.
The light is going to be an issue.
I'm good.
Anything else, Ted?
No.
Conrad, you feeling good?
Yep.
Can I hear a...
I'll make a motion that the Lutz Farms preliminary plan be approved in accordance to planning staff's memo dated July 2, 2020, including all of the recommendations outlined in the memo.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those previous motions say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seth's going to run us through the sign ordinance here. Just want to introduce Kristen Pullenhan, our co-organist and zoning person.
As you may know, in 2015, the Supreme Court made a ruling in the case Reed versus the Town of Gilbert that provided clear direction as to when municipalities across the country can enforce sign regulations that are essentially based on content. The way I like to frame this in my brain, since I've, you know, been dealing with this for a number of years now, you have to read a sign to understand what type of sign it is. Effectively content-based regulation. Essentially, you're infringing on somebody's Second Amendment rights by regulating their freedom of speech. So that's kind of the umbrella as to why we're making a number of these sign ordinance amendments. We're also doing some other changes as well in regards, you know, other things that we found in the ordinance that we thought needed to be addressed. We're also intending to kind of reorganize the entire ordinance to make it a little bit more streamlined. There were some other sections in the existing ordinance that we just felt were a little bit redundant, so we got them out of there in hopes of making it a little bit easier for not only staff to use, but members of the public to be able to read and analyze. As I mentioned, content-based regulations were established, or at least the rulings for them, in the Reed versus Town of Gilbert decision by the Supreme Court. Currently, our ordinance does include multiple sign types and regulations that are heavily content-based. Our proposed ordinance, in short, intends to remove all of these content-based regulations and replace them or supplement them with content-neutral language. What do I mean by content-neutral? Again, you know, identifying content-based regulation is regard to reading a sign to understand what type of sign it is. So a content-neutral regulation might include regulating signs purely based on size, location, height, frequency, and duration. Those are kind of the key identifiers as to content-neutral sign regulations. In our proposed ordinance versus the existing ordinance, a lot of those reflect, or a lot of those changes come into play for temporary signs. One good example I like to lean on is real estate signs. I mean, we all know what a real estate sign is. It's heavily identified in the ordinance as a sign that advertises a space for lease or for rent, whether that be commercial or residential, but it's called out as a real estate sign. Real estate signs were almost the crux of the issue in Reed versus Town of Gilbert, so we have removed that definition entirely and replaced it somewhat in kind with temporary sign regulations at properties for lease or for sale, kind of curtailing defining the signs as those for lease, but saying you can have temporary signs with certain regulations on properties that are for lease or for sale. It's an interesting way of getting around it. Some other changes that we have identified and proposed in the new ordinance, certain types of signs that would be permitted in certain districts, whether that be commercial or mixed-use, even potentially residential districts for certain uses. In dealing with a recent issue in regards to electronic variable message signs and the colors of them, we're simply proposing that all electronic variable message signs in the township can be full color. Existing as it is, on Route 19, you can have full color. Anywhere else in the township, it's red and black. Well, there's some question out there as to whether or not that's violating content-based regulations. It's not 100% clear, but it's not clear in our favor either. But as we've been dealing with business owners, they're not really making non-full-color electronic variable message signs anymore, you know, as technology gets more advanced. It's just easier to make full color. We've not identified it as a true issue for us moving forward, so we're recommending that electronic variable message signs in the township just be full color across the board.
Regardless of their location.
Regardless of location. Now, they're still only permitted in certain districts, so you're not going to have, you know, generally speaking, you won't have one in like a residential district right across them.
Well, the request that came up on Valley Brook Road...
Kind of spurred the conversation a little bit.
So now, with these revisions...
They could.
That would be allowed to be a full color.
Correct.
Not the black and amber.
Correct, yeah.
The question, is there anything, is there any regulation on the brightness or any of that?
Yes, yep. So in our regulations for those types of signs, they're required to have automatic dimmers that reduce the sign brightness at night. You know, they can't change it at a certain frequency. They can't have certain effects in terms of like fluttering or scrolling or anything that's overly distracting. As far as electronic signs go, they're actually pretty stoic signs that don't have a lot of fanciness behind them.
Not a lot of movement.
Yeah, not a whole lot of movement behind them. You'll see them elsewhere where that's certainly not the case.
Like Vegas?
Yes, correct. As I mentioned, you know, we're proposing a number of changes to temporary signs, in particular for-sale and for-lease signs. After I go through this brief description, I'll read some commentary we've received on that from members of the business community, so we'll get to that in a second.
Seth, what about those signs that say, like, "We buy houses" and stuff like that? Are those...
Those are kind of outside of what we would even consider to be this. Typically, those are non-conforming signs that people just stick in the ground and you have to go deal with...
Even political campaign signs?
Political campaign signs can be a little bit of an interesting issue. What we're doing in the proposed ordinance is creating an election season that basically allows for any property to have X number of temporary signs at their discretion, a certain amount of time before an election and like a week after. And it's going to be kind of a free throw. Now, the interesting caveat with that, when you say we can't base signs on their content, those don't necessarily have to be political signs. Somebody could put anything on.
So I could advertise my business.
Correct, right. We could not tell somebody, well, just because you're in this season, you can only have a political sign. That's, you know, at the heart of that Reed versus the Town of Gilbert.
Okay, so the timeframe is also content-neutral.
Correct.
The timeframe is the timeframe, but you can put anything on.
Timeframe is the timeframe.
We have folks that live in the township that know these rules, and they have signs of expression signs, personal expression signs on their property year-round.
Yeah, that's another example of kind of a serious issue with our current ordinance is we have identified personal expression signs, which allow people to say some things but not others, and it's just, it's kind of a mess. We're also changing up a little bit of our regulations for certain signs in certain districts, particularly those located on properties owned by local units of government, i.e. the township's school district, especially considering like the new high school side allowing for a nice sign to be placed there that might not typically be allowed in the underlying zoning district. As I mentioned, we're reorganizing the entire ordinance, making it a little more streamlined. We previously had, you know, we talked about major signs and minor signs, and those were inherently attached and freestanding signs anyway, so we just called it attached and freestanding and took out two sections. It just made it simpler for us. We have shared this proposed ordinance with the planning commissioner earlier this year, with council, and with the Chamber of Commerce and the business community. It is to our knowledge that when we shared it with the chamber, they forwarded it on to the members of the business community, and we received two correspondence back for our proposed ordinance, and I will read those aloud now. The first comes from Tammy Hardy, dated Wednesday, June 10, 2020. I spoke with Tammy earlier that day on the phone and asked that she send me a nice email kind of outlining her concerns so I could read them aloud and provide them to the planning commission and council. She says, "Seth, thanks so much for the time you spent this morning explaining the intent of the new ordinance proposal for temporary for-lease signs. You explained that due to a recent Supreme Court decision, municipalities are limited in their ability to control the content of signs. Someone could put up something that is offensive and the township would be unable to remove the sign without current regulations. I understand your concerns and appreciate you explaining that to me. To my knowledge, there has never been an issue in Peters Township. I cannot recall a situation where a property owner put up an offensive sign. For a property owner, there is no upside to posting an offensive sign. It is simply bad business that would make, that would market, would negatively impact any such owner. If this were to happen in the future, I would be happy to personally contact any business requesting that they remove their sign. In addition, no property owner wishes to confront the Peters Township municipality. You would always have the option to threaten the legislation you are currently proposing, and that would put any property owner in line. For-lease signs are a primary means of marketing for property owners and small businesses. They would bring in new businesses to Peters Township. They enable us to pay our taxes. Your proposal would greatly inhibit our ability to market our spaces and take away one of our most effective marketing tools. The proposed legislation would have a significant negative and harmful impact on property owners and small businesses. At Waterdam, Tammy's, they own Waterdam Center and Waterdam Commons, we always have some space available or coming available. For-lease signs provide notice to people looking for space that Waterdam is an option for them. The new proposal tries to solve a problem that doesn't currently exist by taking away one of the key marketing tools of your largest taxpayers. Let us continue to use for-lease signs to attract new businesses to Peters Township. If a problem arises in the future, we can work together to solve it." Before I move on to the next bit of correspondence, I'll kind of briefly talk about what her conversation with myself talked about. Throughout the township, we have a number of these examples of signs that would potentially become non-conforming signs under the proposed ordinance. We see a lot of these large for-lease, for-rent signs that have effectively become permanent signs. I mean, these would be in addition to any permanent sign that is permitted for the site, but as you can tell, these aren't going to go away anytime soon. I mean, they're securely affixed in the ground, they stay up year-round, they've become a permanent sign within themselves.
And what makes these signs, these examples, non-conforming?
Under the proposed ordinance, so under the proposed ordinance, you know, a typical commercial center would be allowed one freestanding sign or two, kind of depending on some variables, and would not be allowed to have an additional one. So these effectively have become an additional one. What we're saying in our proposed ordinance in terms of advertising office space for lease or for rent is allowing for businesses to utilize like an existing space inside of an existing monument sign that could say, example, for here, for lease or for rent. Space available, call X number, space for rent, you know, call this number. This sign here, which they've attempted to do, would still be in violation of our proposed ordinance because the criteria we've established allows for them to be one feet in height. Obviously, that's greater than one feet in height. We would allow for them to be the full width of the existing monument sign, but again, they've exceeded the height allowance in our proposed ordinance. The Waterdam Commons one, it's a little bit closer. Again, that looks like it's probably in excess of a foot in height. We've taken some further considerations into that recently, and we would, we'll ultimately make a recommendation at the end of this presentation that we increase that to two feet to accommodate most of these tenant panels, because generally speaking, they're somewhere between 14 and 24 inches in height, so 12 feet, 12 inches might just not give us enough space for these businesses to truly utilize them. But again, back to these, you know, they've just become, there's many examples in the township, and they've become freestanding signs on their own, and we consider them to be somewhat of an eyesore in the community, especially some of the ones that don't look nearly as nice as these. And again, they never go away. While we understand that, you know, they need to advertise and market their spaces accordingly, we feel that the allotment for the signs to be placed within existing monument signs, along with the other options they have for temporary signs, still gives businesses and property owners an adequate avenue to advertise space available for lease or for rent. In addition to this, if they do not have an electronic variable message sign, they could do theoretically a standard temporary sign that would be limited in duration and time and frequency throughout the year, but they have the option, if they don't have electronic signs, to put out a regular temporary sign for a certain amount of time. But they certainly could not be up year-round.
Can I ask, the sign on the right, or just a typical sign for a development like that, what's the size, again, reminding what the typical sports will be?
It depends on the zoning district. Let me see if I can get to that real quick. Freestanding signs, you know, commercial, single tenants, 50 square feet. It can increase with multiple tenants, up to potentially 70 square feet in overall size, which is pretty significant.
So if they wanted to have a permanent sign, they could crop up six square feet on that 70 and put their name and number there and say space available and be there forever?
That's true.
That is true.
Yeah.
And, you know, you've got six businesses being advertised there on the main placard. If you just added a foot below, you know, made the sign a foot bigger or whatever...
If it's, yeah, if that sign...
Made it part of your permanent sign and be done with it.
If that sign's not at the current maximum, you could create space to potentially advertise these spaces for rent or for lease. I'll move on to the second piece of correspondence. This is from Laura Ashworth, dated Monday, June 29, 2020.
That would look more appealing, too.
Yeah, I don't disagree. "Hello, Mr. Coons. We received word that there is a proposed ordinance regarding signage in Peters Township. As we own two buildings along the Washington Road, Route 19 corridor in Peters Township, we have some concerns on the 3150 Washington Road, Peloplae Plaza building, which you see here on the right. We are currently advertising leased space there, and we'll have to advertise leased space availability from time to time. If this ordinance goes into effect with the signed size requirements, no one passing by would be able to read the space availability unless they were sitting at the light of Valley Brook Road and heading north on Route 19. We would like to voice our concerns about the required sign dimensions proposed in this ordinance. Thank you for your time and attention. Laura Ashworth, 3150 Washington Road, LLC." So after reading her email, I think she did bring up a valid point, that the one foot tall that we allow might not necessarily be enough, so we would like to increase that to two feet. And, you know, their space really isn't that far off, you know. If they truly had a limited space available for lease for maybe a limited period of time, they might have other options. I think this is an electronic message sign, if I'm not mistaken, so they wouldn't be allowed to do a standard temporary sign, but they could incorporate, you know, this into one of their existing signs down here, and then maybe a message in their electronic variable message sign that says space for lease.
So what would be allowed to be added on to the top part, which is the permanent sign, where the word leased space available, that's a temporary sign that's in violation?
Correct. And we would have to, if they wanted to increase the overall size of this freestanding sign, we'd have to look at the current size of it, and if they have the availability to add on to it, and if they do, then potentially they could create space to do further advertising.
But I'm saying, without adding, without changing the permanent sign, if they wanted to put a temporary sign below it, if you change it to two feet, it could be two feet by the full width of that and have that information be up for... Is there a duration that it...
Nope. There's no limited duration on that. But it has to stay within the confines of the existing monument sign.
It can't be a freestanding...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It can't be one of these.
Can't be one of those.
Right.
Yeah.
So if the current ordinance says 70 square feet, it has to stay within 70. We're not adding...
You're not going to be able to add any width to it?
Nope.
But you can be two feet below that 70. So you can have the 70, and then an additional two feet, whatever the width of that sign is, you can have that additional two feet.
Oh, so you can do that. Okay.
Even if you're at the maximum size, square feet of sign that you can have, two feet extra... two feet extra...
Yep.
The width you can add is what, how I read, that way.
Right now, we're saying, well, we think we should add it.
We will be recommending one.
Yeah, it does say one.
The more we thought about it, we didn't think it was...
I think, I think it's distracting if it's, if it's smaller, because you can't, you've got to slow down...
You're going to be trying too hard.
Become a traffic hazard or something.
But I think the important point is, is that we're not taking it away entirely. We're trying to clean up the corridor and have less signs, incorporate it onto the existing signs.
Strategically placed and more, you know, uniform.
I think if we make it a little bigger, the two feet, I think we should be good.
So generally speaking, that's the gist of all of our changes. The temporary signs for sale or for lease for some of the most significant changes that we made. We added some new figures to the beginning of the ordinance, hoping to make it a little bit easier for people to get the basic information right off the bat without having to dive into all the text. So that's kind of all that we're proposing. Staff is making a recommendation that the current ordinance be recommended for approval to council, subject to an increase in the, the vertical height of for-lease or for-rent signs, temporary signs in commercial districts from one feet to two feet. I don't want to say particularly in a certain figure because it pops up other places, so we'll just have to change it throughout.
I have seen those, in like up at the McDowell, I think they have a, the developer has a permanent sign in one of those windows that says the name of the developer and the, and their number.
Yet a lot of businesses don't put the freestanding signs out. They do it in other creative ways.
Yeah, it's not fair across the board the way it is right now.
So are we, you, you require an approval or...
We need a motion of recommendation.
The President, Commissioners, do you have any more questions or concerns?
Nope.
All right, well, let's look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the, is this a new ordinance?
The proposed...
Amendment.
The proposed sign ordinance for Peters Township in the, with adding the condition that the temporary sign be increased from 12 inches to 24 inches vertically.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. All those in favor of recommending the sign ordinance, for those sign ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Good, it passes.
Very much.
Lot of good work there. It's a tremendous amount of work that we've done.
Yeah.
That was Kristen and Seth. So do we have any miscellaneous issues by either the commission or the department?
I'll tell you what we're working on. We got Arlequino's doing an addition that'll come to you in August. Arlequino Restaurant on Camp Lane doing an addition and expanding parking.
Is that that?
Where's our...
Arlequino Camp Lane.
The schoolhouse looking.
Oh, oh, okay.
We have next month coming, Arlequino Restaurant addition. There's a request by Mr. Robinson, owns that property on Valley Brook Road, to build a, build a new office building partially in the flood plain. So there's an analysis that where they think, they've submitted to us, and we're reviewing that. Planning Commission, the Planning Commission have to make a recommendation to the zoning area board on that. That's on Valley, next to where the cafe...
That we looked at last year.
Oh, okay. That was kind of like partially in the flood plain there.
Yes.
Their issue was that cross, they were commenting about that.
Right. So that's coming to you next month? We have another subdivision up off of T.P. Moccasin, six-lot subdivision on a private road. A little tricky to deal with, so that's coming out. Those are, is there any other projects? Those are the three big projects that we're bringing to the Planning Commission in August.
So the Robinson office building, is that adjacent to the, the plan that we approved last year?
The access will be a shared access with the cafe to the right, office building further east on Valley Brook. That's it?
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.